Welcome to the City of Eureka Springs Bozen Planning Commission meeting Tuesday, July the 12th, 2022. Tom, if you'd establish a quorum, please, a roll call.
Peter Graham.
Here.
Susan Harmon.
Here.
Megan Morris.
Anne Salee.
Here.
Fergie Stewart.
Here.
Melissa, Joe Hill.
Here.
And Tom Buford present.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with due justice for all. So we're going to open the Board of Zoning Adjustment.
Can you turn that volume up, please? We got old people here. Can't hardly hear you.
Okay, so we're going to do, we're looking at approval of the agenda for the Board of Zoning Adjustment. We have one item, which is a variance lot size parcel 925-002276-000, Lot 1, Block 11, magnetic base survey. I can get a motion to approve?
I make a motion that we approve the item, new business item.
Second.
Second.
You seconded it? Fergie made the motion to approve and Susan Harmon seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
So I have two public comments. I have Sharon Lawler.
It's not on that issue, ma'am.
Is this on, is this on the zoning issue?
No, it's on the other issue.
It's on what?
On the, regarding the parking. It's not on the zoning issue.
Okay, so that's not on any agenda tonight. But you're free to make public comments.
Okay, well, I was told that I could come to make public comments.
You, you can, if you'd like to get up to the microphone, that'd be fine.
Okay, thank you.
Uh huh. And you have, you have three minutes.
Okay, thank you very much. I am the owner of 263 Spring Street, where my son is in residence. We actually live in Holiday Island. We're coming to request consideration of the parking issue. We purchased that property in June of 2001, 2021, and we were told at that time that it had two on-street parking places and three off-street, which was a consideration because we had already been told that parking in, in Eureka Springs was a problem. So we purchased it with that understanding and, and my concern is that they're now saying that they're going to take those parking places from us, that they can be used for residents only, and that that would be done approximately by where the vehicles are registered. My son does not own a vehicle, he can't afford one, so he uses ours, even though he is in residence there. We are not opposed to the parking places, parking places being marked residence only. In fact, we would appreciate that, with the exception of the two right in front of the property, because it's very difficult for us to tell people not to park on the street, to park in the back when they say, well, it's public parking. So, you know, we would welcome that, but having those two parking places taken away from us would be a serious problem for our business. And I did address this in a letter to, to the commission or the committee on, in, on June or July 5th. So I won't take up any more of your time, I'm just asking that you consider letting us keep the two places that the Birchford House has had for many, many years and, and then assist us with enforcing the rest by making the rest residential parking. Thank you very much.
You have three minutes.
Three minutes, you say?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The property that's in question here has been in my family for over 60 years, not the, the single lot, but the property all around it. I owned from the lot beds along the road, all the way up to a passing place. And if, if they take that property and, and try to put a building on it, you know, first thing is, you got, it's solid rock. That's the first thing. The second thing is, it's, uh, getting winded, which, it's all solid rock down through there. And to be able to put a building in there is almost next to impossible, especially with the zoning footage, the square footage that's required. And I don't want to give them any of my property. Last time this happened was down on the corner, when the, the people bought that and they put, they took where the right-of-way was and put a telephone pole right in the middle of it. So now I don't have a roadbed to get into it from the lower side, except up at Magnetic Springs. So that's my biggest problem. And I appreciate your considerations, and if I can answer any questions, I'd be glad to.
Thank you. We don't have any unfinished business, so we'll go right to the new business, if someone would like to make a motion to discuss.
I'd like to make a motion to discuss the new business.
Second.
Fergie made a motion to discuss, Joe seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Okay, if Michael and Amanda Dodge would like to come forward? As I understand it, this tonight is just a requesting a variance for the subject property, which measures approximately 9,056 square feet, rather than the R2 Contemporary Residential Minimum Lot Size of 10,000 square feet. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Open for discussion. Susan?
I just have a couple of questions about the, the, because the lot size is shrinking, not by a significant amount, but a little bit. Do we, do we know what the minimum square footage for a house on that size lot is? Is there anything in our code that's, that says that there is a minimum? Is there also a maximum? And I guess my question to y'all is, you are planning on building a house on that lot. Do you have a specific size you're looking at?
We have not yet retained an architect. We're kind of in the middle of purchasing this, but we're looking at something of two-bedroom, probably between, it's really small, 800 and 1,000 square feet.
Okay. There is no...
Okay, I didn't think there was.
No, it's just building type of design is a single-family home, two-family home.
That's right.
And, and my only question is, is because the lot size is smaller, that, you know, is that a consideration that we would make to make sure that it doesn't just become much, much bigger than what it, what it should be for that size lot, since we are, since we are considering approving a smaller lot size?
Well, I would think with a smaller lot size, you're going to have a smaller house.
And, and I think that's going to come up when they do the housing construction request and the permit, you know, and that has to be approved. So I think that's where, I think that's going to come up, you know, at, later down the road, but when they actually have the construction plans for the house and they go to Bobby and get that reviewed.
Right, but that wouldn't come bef, that wouldn't...
No, it wouldn't. I mean, that wouldn't come to us, I'm just saying that that would be, I mean, that would be outside of us unless there was another, like you said, a variance request on the, on some, on the house itself as they got the construction permit, couldn't get a permit, then they had to come to us.
Yeah, I, I guess what I'm saying is, we should at least think about those things before we, yeah.
Tom?
I think we do require, you know, two parking spaces. Have y'all, I guess, considered that in your, in your design plan?
We have, you know, obviously, we, we do understand there's, there's a lot of challenges to overcome on this particular property, as Mr. Pierce stated, that it is a lot of rock out there. Of course, the driveway itself would have to accommodate for the drainage that's coming down Magnetic Road. So we've seen some of the other, other neighbors, at least further down towards Main, they have a nice bridge or, or perhaps, you know, some kind of open, open culvert to accommodate for that, for that drainage in there. But yes, the, the driveway would curve into the property and, and allow for two parking We've looked at a lot of the stuff on the property, you know, of course, we don't know exactly what the, what the design of the, of the home would be, but we definitely want to be good neighbors. We don't want to be, you know, build a, a very strange house that doesn't fit in or blend in with, with the natural surroundings. That is our plan, that's what we've discussed with, with all the realtors that we've, we've dealt with, both the seller and the, and the buying agent. But, you know, everything would be, would, would definitely fit in with all the, the building setbacks, the 20 feet in the back, the 10 feet on each side. We're actually, you know, hoping to keep the, you know, natural buffer all the way around the property. There was somewhat of, believe it or not, there's a, a little bit of a clearing, mainly of just underbrush, that's, that's towards the middle to the western part of the property that would allow for us to get this home in without cutting any major trees, if any, and the driveway itself, too. We, we noticed that there's, there's about a 12-foot wide section right, right in between some of the major trees along Magnetic Road that we'd be able to, to get the driveway in there and then curve it in to the property.
I noticed some red, some surveying flagging on some of the trees. Have y'all been a little ray on the tree cut?
We did, no, that was done, I think, by the sellers or the current owners.
It was done to outline the perimeter.
Okay.
Those trees aren't flagged to be taken out, they're flagged for the perimeter.
Okay, so y'all have not been through the process of getting a, a permit for the trees in that you need removed?
No, not yet. We were, this is our first step. And really, when we were dealing with the, with the sellers, the current buyers, we were very excited after we chose this particular property, very excited to know that they had owned that property for up 130 years, and they shared some very kind thoughts about us when we were going through.
Fantastic.
He just stated it was his granddad. But they, they shared some very kind thoughts about us and, and just our plans for the property, and it kind of echoed their, their original vision of, of the property.
Yeah, I looked at the property on the street and I thought it was impossible to build on it, then I walked up the hill there and looked down on it, and there is a flat, you say a flat spot there?
Yeah, the flat spot is more...
It's a rotten flat, considering it's in Eureka Springs, so, yeah.
Right, right.
I kind of changed my mind, yeah.
You know, we, we of course have considered maybe a, if allowed, if it's, if it's within the, the building code, but doing a, a pier-type foundation to minimize the impact on the ground, because what we've learned is that's a lot less destructive to, to any of the ground itself. So that would allow it to, to at least get, get on this, this particular terrain.
Michael Dodge, let me ask you a question I ask almost everybody that come in.
Okay.
Why did you choose Eureka Springs?
Good, good question. Well, my wife and I, we like to bike, and we've come here many times, and actually, the last two times we came, we brought our bikes. We rode the Passion Plate Trails, the Marble Flats Trails, around Black Bass Lake, around Lake Leatherwood. We even rode them up and down the streets as we shopped and dined. Surprisingly enough, we tried to make it up Mountain Street, we didn't quite make it all the way, but we did, we did get about three-quarters of the way before having to, to get off. But we love, love the town, and we weren't really looking for property, we just always casually looked, you know, around the areas that we had visited. And we found these, there was two properties actually back in February along Magnetic Road that were for sale at the time. The other one has since sold, but really, we were, we were eyeballing this one a lot more. And of course, when we, we learned about the sellers and what, what their original thoughts and plans were and shared their kind thoughts with us, we, we knew it was the right property. So that's why Eureka Springs.
All right, well, thank you. It's all like that.
Anybody else have anything? Someone like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the, the lot size variance request for Lot 1, Block 11, Magnetic Base Survey. That's it.
Second.
Okay.
Fergie has made a motion and Joe has seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
A pose? Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Kylie's not here tonight, so I don't know what the next step is, but I will get this approval to her first thing in the morning.
Okay.
And then you can talk to her of what comes next. You're welcome.
Fantastic, thank you.
Welcome to Eureka Springs.
Can I get a motion to adjourn the Board of Zoning Adjustment?
I make a motion that we adjourn the Board of Adjustment?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Tom, get your sign.
Good. Probably a fly. I'm glad you're okay. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the agenda as written.
Second.
Fergie's made, Fergie's made a motion, Joe has seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No public comments, no unfinished business. I don't, I'm sorry, I don't... I'm gonna, I'm, sorry, I need to add a new item, and that is the minutes from meeting of June the 14th, 2022?
It's number one?
Yeah, it's number one. I have number one.
Oh, I didn't even see that.
It's okay.
Okay. Motion to discuss?
I make a motion that, I was just going to approve the, motion that approved the minutes as, as received?
Second.
Okay. I guess I'm not seeing approval of minutes from our last meeting on here.
That was it, right?
That was that? Okay, I'm very confused. Okay, on the, if you go to your attachment and you go down to new business, Mr. Stewart moved to discuss the application, Mr. Buford, question mark, seconded it. I'm guessing, and then I have a couple others, no second, was audible, Mr. Hill seconded, question mark, that's the reason I repeated tonight, who's making the motions? I honestly don't remember.
It was my bad, my, my microphone was not on that night, which I found out.
Okay.
Okay. Okay.
So I will just repeat at the meeting who makes the motion first and who does it second, and hopefully that will clarify that that's what they're talking about. Okay. Megan's not here tonight, so we will pass on the lodging subcommittee meeting. Fergie broadband update.
Okay, well, thank you, thank you, Anne. I emailed the executive summary from the state of Arkansas broadband survey to everybody on the, and so everybody, did everybody get it, get it on email? Okay, sorry I got too late, I wanted to make sure I understood it myself, because if you've ever read some of these documents, they're written in a circle. So, so anyway, to, to help you understand a little bit, the actual whole document's 143 pages long. So I've gone through that document, not in, of course, in any depth, but I will be going through that. There's a committee that was formed by Butch, my, I'm on it, Sandy Martin's on it, and, and as, as, as people in the city that work on the broadband committee. So part of that was getting this done, getting this review done. I am, I am not as optimistic as Sandy is at this point, but I believe that we are not going to get the results we wanted to get, and that was fiber optic cables downtown. However, however, we are going to get in the surrounding area outside the city limits that is going to have fiber. I have talked to the incumbent, and, and they agreed that they're working on contractors to get that started. But one of the things that's interesting about this report is that even the FCC agreed with the state of Arkansas that the incumbents had overstated their, what they had done as far as serving communities. They'd overstated the broadband capabilities, and the FCC actually admitted that there was no fine for that, that, that even, even, I mean, any one of us, if we did a mistake on our IRS return, we know we'd get a fine, right? So, so they're going to review their, their methods and, and come back to the public, I guess the FCC is, and determine that, that there's going to be a fine, hopefully, down the road for companies that overstate capabilities and what they're doing, because they received tax dollars from the public for many years based on what they stated they were providing to the public. So anyway, one of the things that, that, that's a good thing, the other thing's a good thing that was stated actually about the overstating. So the, the Lou, uh, August, Lou Augustine, who ran this $3.5 million survey with the state of Arkansas, this 143-page article does actually state and show these overstated areas. And so we do have those records now, and we can fight with those records and go forward, either, either with the current incumbent or something, and so we have a little bit of power. So going forward is a good thing. I don't know how long it's going to take, if everybody worked with the state government knows it takes probably a couple of years to get a, to get a sign up, much less get wired, you know, but I think, because the money, there's $1.9 billion in, in the coffers right now for the broadband, and they're going to be having to spend that within the next 365 days. So you should be seeing trucks out around Eureka, outside of Eureka unfortunately, but you will see fiber crews, contract crews laying fiber in a very quick manner. So, so, so that, that's my report right now. So it's not as great as I hoped, but it's something.
Thank you, Fergie. Okay.
I just have a quick question. Did you mean to vote on the approval of the minutes?
I was going to go right back to that. She left me this note.
Because I was going to abstain, so I thought, hopefully...
Do I have a motion to approve the...
I make a motion to approve the minutes of June 14th. Of June 14th.
And I'll second.
Okay, Susan made the first motion, Fergie made the second motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I abstain.
Sorry, Anne. Agenda setting for August 9th meeting. Anybody have anything? Yes?
I just have a couple of things, and it, it's in regard to the parking meeting that was held, was it this week or last week? Last week?
Last week.
Okay. I know that we have a meeting coming up, I believe it's on the 2nd of August, I think. But could we add to our agenda just an update on the signs? Because I did drive it today and I did not see any signs. I know that they have some signs made, but apparently there was another sign that needed to be made that was forgotten on the first round. And I believe that was the one that was to go on King Street, whatever the wordage is, but, and then the striping on the corner, when I drove down there this evening, there's, there were probably, and I know it's Tuesday night, but there were probably about 40 spots that were open when I went just before our meeting, so, so I guess that's a good thing for the residents that live there. But can we get an update on that striping on the corner? Because I kind of thought that we might have that done within a couple of weeks, at least, that's what Dwayne had kind of thought.
Yeah, I'll send, I'll send this out tomorrow.
And then the ordinance that we talked about, it, can we get an update on that as well? I don't, I don't know what the process is or what Kylie, how long that takes Kylie to put something like that together, but...
Well, you feel free to call her if you would like to help with that.
Okay.
Yeah, I met with her yesterday, and yeah, just give her a call, and I think any input we can offer would be a great help to her.
Okay, so regardless of what happens at the August 2nd meeting, and maybe that'll be a positive and we'll find some information, or we'll get information, the signs are up, can we at least just make sure that those things are on our agenda?
Certainly.
Okay, thank you.
Now, for the Planning Commission agenda, does anybody have anything for the next meeting?
Did, did we decide at the last meeting that we weren't going to obviously have our pre sort of fact-finding or, you know, about the parking, well, actually, sorry, not parking, minimum maintenance? And so we were going to probably put that off to a time when Kylie could be there, because I think we're at a point where we really need some of her guidance.
Yes, in fact, we talked about that yesterday, I gave her quite a bit of material, and we're going to put something together. I have to be honest, I, I really am not comfortable having workshops where I'm responsible for taping. So I, I, I really prefer that Kylie be responsible for that. So we'll get something set up as soon as we get this draft done.
Sounds good.
And move forward. Tom, anybody have anything?
Yeah, no, no, right now we're good. I just, I just hope we get all our signs up before October. Hopefully we will.
Don't say it like that.
And it doesn't require, all of them, I mean, that extra sign doesn't have to be here before those others could be put up, right?
I, I would hope not.
Yeah, okay.
And my understanding was they should be able to get them up within, my thought was within two weeks.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's reasonable.
Okay, Commissioner comments. Susan?
I have none.
Joe?
None.
Tom?
None.
The only thing I've got again is, I want to thank those businesses, it's been really hot, and, and I know the air conditioners are out there screaming and crying, but I know the air conditioning companies have been flying around town, but I really appreciate those businesses being open, and we've had a lot of great guests in town. Matter of fact, I thought I was in Texas just two days ago, because that's the only license plates I saw were Texas. So, but I know we're in Arkansas. Anyway, I just want to thank them for being open and doing what they do, and, and let's get ready for the Zombie Fest in October, because it's going to be huge.
No comments.
I do want to remind everybody that the next workshop with the city council is on Tuesday, August the 2nd, at 2:00 here in the auditorium.
2:00.
With that being said, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Fergie made a motion to adjourn, Peter and Susan seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Shouldn't carry adjourn, meeting adjourned. Shouldn't carry adjourn, meeting adjourned.
Meeting adjourned.